Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call today's Thursday, July 31st, regular county council meeting to order at 9:30 a.m. And we will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty VI and Treaty VIII traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. We will start with the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Go ahead.
Thank you. I would have liked to add, under an emergent item 8.8, the agricultural disaster from the drought. But I did hear this morning that it is on the upcoming ASB agenda. So would it then be appropriate to leave that off until ASB have their meeting?
Yeah, which is on the 6th, Wednesday, the 6th.
August 6th. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll leave that. I would like to also delete 6.4 as it, as per our legal opinion, does not meet 13.8 of our procedural bylaw. Is there? Pardon? In this situation, because it doesn't meet the procedural bylaw, we can go ahead and just leave it in as part of the discussion. So with regards to the next item we have to discuss, or the items the council would like to discuss, is to... Everybody ready with their highlighters? The items I have that I know of are 2.1, 3.1, 5.1, 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, 8.1, 8.6, 9.2. Which is actually, there was a one change there we also have to make under Section 9. The community event calendars in 9.1, just a small typo, meeting calendars will be 9.2, so that will be discussed. Close and all closed session items, Section 13-1 through 13-6. Anybody else would like to add to the agenda to discuss? Okay, motion?
Motion to accept the agenda as discussed.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that list one more time?
Sure, the list is 2.1, 3.1, 5.1, 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, 8.1, 8.6, 9.2, and all of Section 13.
I'd like to split the question on 6.4.
We just mentioned that as discussed, because it doesn't meet, as we had a legal opinion, we cannot discuss this matter, because it has already been reconsidered. Therefore, it becomes part of the...
That's a misrepresentation of the motion. It's related to the item discussed at the meeting, not 25-299.
And as per the legal opinion, the subsequent motion is part of the original matter. So the motion that we have on the table is to prove the agenda as discussed. If we're ready for the question, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, one more. Just wondering if there's any appetite around the table to table 7.2 until the next meeting, based on documentation from this morning?
If you're ready to go for...
All's good. Let's get her done.
Okay. So on the motion to accept the agenda as discussed, all those in favor? Two, three, four, five, and opposed. One, two, three, four, five, and four. Thank you. We will now move to 3.1, which is the public hearing. I would like to declare the public hearing open at 9:34. I'm Tracy Holland, the Reeve for Athabasca County, and I will be the Chair of the hearing. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome you here today. All of council is present, and I would like to take a moment for introductions. On my right?
Rob Minns, Counselor Division 8, Baptiste Lake Island Lake area.
Hello, Natasha Katonic, Division 2, Collington, Minook, and New Bank Creek.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Division 1, Rochester, Purple area.
Good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division 6, in the north, Wandering River, Blue Jay areas. Thank you for being here.
Kamel Walk, Division 9.
Kelly Chamsik, Division 7, Grassland, Atmore, Rossbyda areas.
Brian Hall, elected in Division 4.
Ashton Anderson, Division 3.
Thank you, I've introduced myself, and if you would like to start and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Diane Clutsey, Land Management Specialist with Athabasca County.
Thank you. Krista Wilkinson, Director, Community and Protective Services. Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Jordan Schenkelberg, Communications Coordinator.
Thank you. And we also have Ms. Leah Blair, our Recording Secretary, and we also have the Secretary of the Public Hearing, which is Bob Beck, who is our CAO for Athabasca County. Any persons who have joined the meeting in person or via Zoom and are wishing to be heard should please give your full name now. Nobody from Zoom. Thank you. The public hearing for the removal of designation for Lot R3, Plan 5177-NY within Wandering River is now open. And I will turn it over to Mr. Bob Beck.
The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council of the County to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters, and all comments must be directed to council through the chairperson. Only one person may speak at a time, and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be: Land Management Specialist Diane Clutsey will speak first to outline the background and provide an explanation. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Ms. Clutsey will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Counselors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only consider matters raised at the hearing. Only counselors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation. And the chair will only ask the question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Thank you. Before hearing from the public, which I'm sure we won't hear from, but I would like to ask Ms. Clutsey to provide the background and an explanation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. So pursuant to Section 674.1 of the Municipal Government Act, a public hearing is required to sell, lease, or otherwise dispose of land designated as reserve. And Section 675.1 states that after taken into consideration the representations made at the public hearing, a council may direct the designated officer to notify the registrar that the provisions of this division, which is Division 9, have been met and complied with, and request that the registrar remove the designation of municipal reserve. Lot 3, Plan 5177-NY is located in the hamlet of Wandering River and is developed with a community hall and skating rink. Lot 3 is currently leased to the Wandering River Agricultural Society, and during the May 29, 2005, regular council meeting, council passed a motion to sell Lot 3 to the society. Advertisement was placed in the Town and Country This Week newspaper for July 15 and July 22. In addition, notice was placed on the county's website starting the week of July 14, which provided information regarding the public hearing. And a sidewalk sign was posted on the parcel, sorry, for the week of July 14 and will be removed later on this week. Adjacent landowners were mailed notices of this public hearing, and a total of two letters were sent.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions or points of clarification they wish to ask Ms. Clutsey? Go ahead, please, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. The question I had was, once the removal of the reserve designation has been completed, will a redistricting be required for this property in order to permit the community group to operate?
Madam Chair, members of the council, I don't believe so. It would just become Lot 3 of the plan number, just the word "reserve" will be removed from the title.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Clutsey? All right. Are there any written materials that have been submitted? No materials, thank you. I don't think there are anybody here to call upon to speak. So does council have any questions or points of clarification? Going once. All right. And I'm assuming there's no one here that has not spoken and wishes to speak. Oh, go ahead, Counsel Gerlock.
Did the community of Wandering River request to purchase these properties? Did they initiate the process?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. So this matter came up when the county administration was going through our list of leasing. What we have for properties that we were leases, and this was one of the properties identified that we were willing to sell to the society.
Okay. As I mentioned, there's, assuming no one else who has not spoken and wishes to speak. There's no one else, all right. And last chance for council to have any questions or points of clarification. Think we're good. Again, we have one more opportunity in this list, additional questions of any speaker or of the staff. Which we don't have. Does anyone feel they have not been fairly heard? No. All right. There being no further testimony, I will close the public hearing. I further advise council cannot receive any information on this matter. Thank you for attending the public hearing, and I declare the public hearing closed at 9:42. All right. So the next item we have on our agenda is 4.1, or we didn't actually pick 4.1, is 5.1, post-session delegation. So we'll need a motion, pardon me, they're not here until 10 a.m., and we're not there yet. So we will move on to item 7.1 of your agenda package, page 54. This is for the bylaw 006, 2025, road closure. And I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Clutsey if she would like to give the information on the background, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. So application to close a portion of undeveloped road allowance, which is the road allowance running north and south, adjacent to Lot 1, Block 1, Plan 11202217, was received on February 22. The request to close the road is to permit the landowner to develop a fire smart plan to protect the existing residential buildings and to preserve historic building locations. Closing the area of undeveloped road allowance will not affect access to neighboring properties as access is achieved by an easement through northeast 286418, which has been established as a conservation site that no new development be permitted on that quarter section. So Amisk Lake splits the road allowance about halfway within the northeast 286418, and the landowner of Lot 1 wishes to close only the southern portion that is directly adjacent to his Lot 1. On March 5, the proposal was emailed to internal departments, which was Infrastructure, Planning and Development, and Enforcement and Fire Services. It was recommended to keep the northern 65 meters of undeveloped road allowance adjacent to Lot 1 to protect future access to the road allowance, and the applicant was okay with that request. And then Fire Services requested information on the proposed fire smart plan, and additional information was shared with them. The proposal was circulated to Alberta Transportation Economic Corridors through the Art Path Porthole on March 5, and on March 7, the county received response that they had no concerns. Agencies in the areas that may be affected were mailed notices on March 5. Adco electorate had no concerns. Apex Utilities required a right-of-way, which will be submitted to the Minister of Transportation if this goes through. Fortis Alberta had no concerns. Federation of Alberta Co-ops Limited had no concerns. Tellus had no concerns. And Alberta Forestry and Parks did not support the road closures, and the road closures, sorry. The response was it would be best if the undeveloped road allowance not be closed and remain as is. Trespass on the road allowance from the adjacent landowner should be addressed through other means than closing and consolidation. And if the undeveloped road allowance is closed and consolidated, forestry and parks does not require an easement to access the adjacent lands. Administration believes that the first 65 meters of the undeveloped road allowance will continue to provide an opportunity to access adjacent parcels and to this parcel. And concerns of previous encroachments were addressed in August of 2023. There's only one adjacent landowner to the west, and they did not have any concerns. If council grants first reading, administration would request that council consider scheduling a public hearing for the August 28 meeting to allow an opportunity for comments to be read into record.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, I'd like to move the recommended motion.
Okay. So we'll do that separate to give the first reading. We'll vote on the first reading, and then we'll vote on the motion for the public hearing. Okay? All right, is there any discussion on the first reading? Before we do pass first reading, deny first reading? Okay. So Counsel Anderson would like to give first reading of bylaw 006-2025, located adjacent to east of Lot 1, Block 1, Plan 1120217. If we're ready for that, all those in favor? And I see no opposed. All right, that's 9-0. And on the motion, Counsel Anderson would like to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on August 28, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. for bylaw 006-2025. There's no, go ahead. Counsel Hall.
I'd propose an amendment to... Is it an hour practice, we're just scheduling the public hearings right from the start of the meeting? Sorry, never mind. I withdraw that.
So do you want it to say 9:35? You're fine with 9:30? Okay. If we're ready for the question, to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on August 28, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. for bylaw 006-2025, all those in favor? And I see no opposed. Thank you. All right, on to 7.2, as we do have time before our delegation. We did receive more documentation on that this morning. The recommendation here is to give first reading to the bylaw 015-2025, as well as first reading to bylaw 016-2025, and then the motion to direct administration to schedule and advertise a public hearing for August 28 at 9:30 for both bylaws, as recommended from Counsel Cromwell. Is there any discussion, or actually would the Director Wilkinson or Ms. Clutsey like to speak on this one?
Madam Chair, members of the council, so the areas are the proposed bylaws in front of you today, 015 and 016. Although separate, they are interconnected, because without the area structure plan, the rezoning, which should not take place, and vice versa. And so administration is recommending first reading today so we can pursue the public hearing and allow any comments to be read into records. The consultants did hold an open house for the public, and the what-we-heard report has been shared with council. Paper copies were circulated today. So administration is proposing or recommending first reading just to allow the process of the public hearing to take place.
Awesome. Thank you, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. The motion was put on the floor, correct?
From Counsel Cromwell.
Thank you. I would like to propose an amendment to the scheduling of the public hearing. I don't think that it's going to be timely to host that at the beginning of our council meeting. So I'd like to propose that we push that to a date in September and host a date for that so that people have opportunity to voice their opinions, and we don't feel that we're trying to rush them through that.
Okay. Is there a timeline that needs to take place to hold the public hearing from the time of first reading or any of those things?
Madam Chair and members of council, just to take into consideration is that if we hold it in September, the public, the second and third readings would have to follow with council as they sit. We couldn't pursue it after elections. It would kind of fall off the tables, because anyone, only those at the public hearing could give further readings to the bylaw. So there's just to take that into consideration. Administratively, I don't think there's any other issues with scheduling it in September.
Okay, so would we be, basically you're requesting that we hold a special meeting for this public hearing? Yeah. Counsel Hall?
I'd propose the 3rd, and I don't want to correct admin, but I think your comment is based on the assumption as long as five members of council who are at this table return, and a quorum is established, you should be able to hold the meeting at any time in the future.
I believe so, yes, as long as there's a quorum that attended the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I would propose the 3rd of September.
September 3rd at 9:30 a.m.?
Whatever you want, 8 p.m., 9 a.m. My preference is early morning, so 9:30.
Okay, so being that this is Counsel Anderson's amendment, is September 3rd sufficient for you?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So on the amendment to, we'll start actually, we'll start in order. We'll do the amendment, and that is to direct administration to schedule and advertise a public hearing. However, I'm sorry, we have to have the first reading complete, pardon me. So we will start there. Counsel Cromwell would like to give first reading to bylaw 015-2025 Skeleton Lake Estates Area Structure Plan. We're ready for that question and the vote, all those in favor? Nine, I don't see any opposed. The second item is to give first reading to bylaw 016-2025 Land Use Bylaw Amendment for part of Northwest 136519, West of the Fourth, from Agricultural District to County Residential District. If everybody is ready for that, no discussion, okay, all those in favor? I don't see any opposed. And on the amendment, which was to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing for September 3, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. for bylaw 015-2025 and 016-2025. All those in favor? And I don't see any opposed. So I believe we're good to go.
You have to call a question.
Again, to direct administration to...
You have to vote on the amendment.
We did.
And you have to vote on the motion.
Well, the motion is to direct administration to schedule and advertise...
This 28th, so the amendment is to change the words to the September 3rd, we'll vote on that, and then the main. It's two votes.
To direct administration to schedule and advertise a public hearing for September 3, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. for bylaw 015-2025 and 016-2025. All those in favor? And I don't see any opposed. We're good to go. Thank you. We still have a few minutes before our delegation. 7.3, bylaw 019-2025 Road Allowance Licensing Agreement is on page 218 of your agenda. The recommendation here is to give all three readings to bylaw 019-2025 Road Allowance Licensing Agreement between Northwest 356325 West of the Fourth and Southwest 26425 West of the Fourth. Would Ms. Clutsey like to speak on this one?
Madam Chair, members of council, I don't really have anything to add other than it's part of our policy to pass a bylaw in order to allow the licensing of an undeveloped road allowance. And the purpose outlined by the applicant is to pasture the cows in the fall and summer. And I do realize that the recommendation, I should have separated it into first reading, second reading, and third reading, my apologies. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, no worries. Does anyone have any questions? Pretty quiet bunch, all right. So on the recommendation to give first reading to bylaw 019-2025 Road Allowance Licensing Agreement between Northwest 356325 West of the Fourth and Southwest 26425 West of the Fourth, Counsel Cromwell would like to move first reading. If we're ready for the question, all those in favor? And I see no opposed. For second reading, that bylaw 019-2025 be given second reading as presented, Counsel Chamsick would like to move that. If we're ready for that question, all those in favor? See no opposed. Do we have unanimous consent to go to third and final reading of 019-2025? Okay, all those in favor, unanimous consent? Yes, we do. So we will go to third reading. If anybody would like, Counsel Cromwell would like to give third reading to bylaw 019-2025 Road Allowance Licensing Agreement between Northwest 356325 West of the Fourth and Southwest 26425 West of the Fourth. No discussion, all those in favor? And I see no opposed, thank you, 9-0. Can we get through item 7.4 before our delegation? I'm thinking. 7.4 is on page 224 of your agenda package. And just have to get organized here. Thank you. Okay, Counsel Chamsick would like to go forward. We have to do, recommendation here is to give first, second, unanimous consent to obtain third, and finish off with the third final reading. This one is for bylaw 021-2025, the procedural bylaw amendment for public hearings. Did you want to speak on this one?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. I don't have much more to add as to what's in the request for decision other than passing a bylaw for electronic public hearings is mandatory under the Municipal Government Act. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. All righty, is there any discussion amongst council? Okay, Counsel Chamsick would like to move that bylaw 021-2025 be given first reading as presented. All those in favor? See, that's nine, no opposed, nine, oh, one, eight and one. The second reading is presented by law, Counsel Chamsick would like to move that bylaw 021-2025 be given second reading as presented. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor? We have eight and one opposed. Eight, eight and one, so I'm assuming we won't be getting unanimous consent to move forward to third reading? All right. So we will stop this at this point. We do not have unanimous consent to go forward. Thank you. We didn't need to actually do the official motion to do the... We didn't need to actually do the official motion to do the, we knew, okay.
I'll make a motion for unanimous consent.
All right, all those in favor? And those opposed? Seven and, seven and, six and three. Thank you. I'm thinking we'll just take a couple of minutes, I'm assuming our delegation will be here shortly. Sorry? Yep, we can move to go in if, if everybody just gives us a second. We're going to make the motion to go into closed at this time, so council would like to go into closed, all those in favor?
Sorry, who made the motion?
Ashton made the, Counsel Anderson made the motion, and you voted in.
You bet.
Yeah. All those in favor, we're good to go, we're officially enclosed.